Mayor Pro Tem, anything?
Oh, I just want to thank you, Mr. Mayor, for your comments a moment ago. Very eloquent, and I think you spoke from the heart, and you spoke on behalf of all of us, so thank you very much.
Councilmember Barrett.
I just want to remind everyone that September is National Preparedness Month, and it's the perfect time to get your family ready for the unexpected. Join the RSM Community Emergency Response Team, CERT, for a free workshop on Wednesday, September 17th, from 6:30 to 7:30 at RSM City Hall. You will learn life-saving skills like first-aid kit essentials, bleeding control, utility shut-off, fire extinguisher use. There is no registration, just come ready to learn. And then on the following day, Thursday, September 18th, you can have a cup of coffee with your local deputies. Starbucks and Target have partnered up to host the RSM Police Services Coffee with a Cop event from 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. at Target. You can stop by for some coffee and conversation. Then save the date for Thursday, September 25th for Pizza with the Police from 4:00 to 6:00 at Sergeant Pepperoni's, and the first 50 attendees will get a free slice of pizza. Thank you.
Thank you. Bringing us to item 2.2, Committee Assignment Reports. We have none listed. Does anyone have anything to report from committee work? All right, then that's going to bring us to item 3, Presentations and Proclamations. And if I could have the Mayor Pro Tem join me in front of the dice for this, I'd appreciate it. Well, this is going to be a lot more pleasant and a lot more fun than we started off tonight. So happy to see all of our ballplayers here in town. The Mayor Pro Tem and I spent many, many years on the Little League fields here, and I'm sure I get no argument from Mr. McGurk that those were the best days ever. So, tonight, we are very pleased to recognize the Santa Margarita Little League 10-U and 11-U All-Star Teams, and we're going to recognize each team separately. So, if you would, please, we're going to start off with the 11-U team. If you would please, 2025. And to assist us with this presentation, I would now like to invite forward Malia Harry with the Second Harvest Food Bank of Orange County. Hunger and poverty are issues of vital concern in California, where more than one in five Californians face food insecurity on a daily basis and do not know where their next meal will come from. Everyone needs nutritious food to thrive, and people are working hard to provide for themselves and their families, yet over, get this, 359,000 individuals, including 86,000 children right here in Orange County, are food insecure. Our city is committed to taking steps to combat hunger in every part of our community and to provide additional resources that those in RSM need. Our city is committed to working with the Orange County Hunger Alliance and educating people about the role and importance of food banks and food care in addressing hunger and raising awareness of the need to devote more resources, resources and attention to hunger issues. In the first half of 2024, the Orange County Food Bank and Second Harvest Food Bank collectively recorded an average of 806,985 individual food distribution visits per month from our neighbors facing food insecurity. In the first half of 2025, Orange County Food Bank and Second Harvest Food Bank have collectively distributed 36,709,298 pounds of food through its partner network of food pantries, soup kitchens, shelters, senior centers, schools, colleges, universities, and other community organizations. Abound food care helps to facilitate the recovery of over 25 million pounds of excess edible food in Orange County each year, reducing food waste and diverting that food to those who really need it. So the month of September has been designated Hunger Action Month in order to bring attention to food insecurity in our communities and to enlist the public in the movement to end hunger by taking action, including volunteering, donating, and advocating to ensure every community and everybody in it has the food they need to thrive. Food banks and other organizations across the country, including members of the Orange County Hunger Alliance, are going to host numerous events throughout the month of September to bring awareness and help end food insecurity in our local community. So therefore, as the mayor, on behalf of all my city council colleagues, it's our pleasure to have you here tonight to shine a light on this very important issue and to thank you and honor you for all that you do to make our community a better place. Thank you.
I'll just keep it brief. It's a hard act to follow the Little Leaguers, but thanks for sticking around. Thank you to the mayor and, almost, okay, Vice Mayor, is that? Mayor Pro Tem, okay. And the city of Rancho Santa Margarita. You guys are always so supportive every year during the month of September. So September is Hunger Action Month. It's a national campaign to bring awareness and enact, you know, the public and let them know about food insecurity. Orange County is a very affluent county. There's also a lot of food need here in the county. So we like to bring awareness. We like to inspire action. Come volunteer at your local food bank or your local food pantry. Here in RSM, there's RSM Cares just down the street. They're one of our partners. So we at Second Harvest provide the food for RSM Cares here in Rancho Santa Margarita. So get involved, help spread the word. Orange is the color of hunger awareness, which is why I'm wearing this orange shirt tonight. But thank you again to the city. You guys are always so, so supportive. And we go to all the city council meetings. The food banks are the whole county, so there's 34 cities. So I don't go to all 34 personally, but we try to visit all of the city councils and just help spread awareness that there is a high food need in the county. So thank you so much.
Next up is item 3.3, which is a proclamation regarding National Preparedness Month, September of 2025. And at this time, I'd like to invite forward to assist us Jim Clements, the lead CERT instructor and co-founder of RSM CERT. National Preparedness Month creates an important opportunity for residents and business owners to prepare their homes, businesses, and communities for any type of emergency, ranging from a natural disaster to a potentially terrorist attack. Such preparation can reduce the number of fatalities and the economic devastation resulting from such disasters, both in our communities and in our nation. The Federal Emergency Management Agency's READY Campaign, the Citizens Corps, and other federal, state, local, private, and volunteer agencies are working to increase public awareness in preparing for emergencies and to educate individuals on how to take action in an emergency. Emergency preparedness is the responsibility of everyone. And all citizens are urged to make preparedness a priority and work together as a team to ensure that individuals, families, and communities are prepared for disasters and emergencies of all types. Residents are encouraged to participate in citizen preparedness activities to review the READY Campaign's website at ready.gov and to become more prepared in general. Emergencies and disasters can occur unexpectedly, posing significant threats to life, property, and the environment. So Jim, as the mayor, on behalf of my city council colleagues, I want to thank you for all that you do to help get our community and its residents ready for any emergency. And just thank you in general for being a great all-around citizen.
I'm getting the microphone. Here we go. So, no, so it's kind of interesting that we talked about preparedness, and a lot of people think preparedness is, I got a first-aid kit, right? Well, preparedness goes beyond that. You've got to prepare yourself for whatever the emergency may be, but it helps the community recover. If you are prepared, then it helps mitigate the damage and/or the setback you have because you were prepared. The CERT community, Community Emergency Response Team, we have individuals in everyone, all nine of our evacuation zones. Okay, that's up there. And then, so with that being said, they're there to hold the line. Our CERT members are certified, and they're trained and tested in medical emergencies. They're trained and tested in evacuation, building evacuation. They're trained and tested in fire suppression. They're trained and tested in disaster psychology. The whole point is, we are there to hold the line until the fire department, the police, and EMS arrive to make sure that everybody is safe in our own community. So I'd like to have my team, I know we have a few people here, can you kind of come up here? Because we're going to get a picture of that. While they're walking up, next week, Wednesday night, sorry, it starts at 6, not 6:30. Councilmember Barrett, you said 6:30. I want to make it clear. Starts at 6:00, 7:30. We're doing a presentation. Our team is doing a workshop. Are you prepared? We're going to go over firefighting, we're going to go over, if that's bleeding control. How many people know how to use, have ever used a tourniquet? We're going to cover that. We're going to actually do a lot of hands-on. Not only will you have a little bit of lecture, but you'll have a lot of hands-on experience. So it goes from 6 to 7:30, right here, a week from today.
All right. That concludes item 3 and brings us to agenda item number 4, Public Comments. To my council colleagues, I want to call your attention to the fact that we received four e-commerce for tonight's meeting. Those are in front of each of you. We received three comments regarding the Antonio Parkway Gateway Project. One from Rhonda Lundberg, one from Bethard, and another from Rickard. And the fourth was received with respect to vehicles parked alongside RSM Middle School from Ron Leblin. And we thank each of those residents for their comments. We do have one individual who has asked to speak in person tonight, so I'm going to call forward at this time, Brienne Boyle. Good evening, Brienne. Welcome.
Hi there. I would love to hear those e-commerce at some point in time, but... So I want to say that the city has not addressed my Americans with Disabilities Act request for reasonable accommodations to access video-recorded meetings. I've submitted requests multiple times, and I've only been told to submit more, and there haven't been any accommodations. The city claims there's no law requiring video despite my clear explanation that this format is necessary because of my disability. Members also failed to identify speakers, which makes the audio recordings impossible to follow unless I attend in person. That forces me to leave work early and sit through long sessions that can trigger migraines, which is an undue burden for me, and I also shouldn't have to explain my disability. Citing cost as a reason to deny accommodations makes priorities clear. Accessibility is not valued. If you are hard appearing in this town, the council's made it clear your participation is not a concern. I also want to touch on something else that happened today at the beginning of the meeting. I don't think it's appropriate in a government office that should be secular according to our constitution and the founding fathers you revere so much to ask our city residents to take a moment in prayer, a moment of silence, totally understandable, but in prayer. The words that come to my mind are Christian nationalism. You expressed sadness over Charlie Kirk on the same day a Colorado school experienced a shooting. You didn't mention that. Did you know Charlie Kirk once said that lost lives were a price we have to pay for our Second Amendment rights? He did. Do you think children being shot in schools is an acceptable price to pay? Because Charlie did. Did you know that Charlie promoted an anti-Semitic theory called cultural Marxism? He did. This is the guy that you revered so much earlier on. Did you know Charlie supported the insurrection on January 6th? He did, but you called him a patriot. No one should have to face the violence Charlie did. I want to be very clear. I condemn that for any human being. No one should have to risk their life or feel that it's a risk of their life. They shouldn't be shot in public or private or anywhere. But we do live in a country, like you mentioned, where that stuff does happen. And there's one side of the aisle that's trying to fight to mitigate that, and there's another that isn't. So if you are using your breath to talk about justice, maybe hold it for one more minute and construct a more critical thought.
Thank you for your comments, Brienne. Appreciate your turn of view. I stand by my comments from earlier. With respect to your request for accommodation, I think you've received the city's response already.
Yep, and you didn't respond.
And we're in full compliance with all legal requirements, so thank you for your comments.
You told me to keep requesting it.
All right. That concludes public comments. And we'll now move on to item 5, the Consent Calendar. All matters on the consent calendar are to be approved in one motion unless a council member, member of the staff, or member of the public requests separate action on any item on the consent calendar. Do we need to remove any items from the consent calendar? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar. You have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Bringing us to item 6, which is a public hearing item, 6.1, Zoning Code Text Amendment, ZCA 25-001, which is an ordinance amending the Rancho Santa Margarita Municipal Code to update and clarify regulations related to accessory dwelling units and junior accessory dwelling units in accordance with state law. Ms. Kuda, good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. This is the most recent update to the city's regulations regarding accessory dwelling units, or I will be calling them ADUs. The state has long considered ADUs an opportunity to provide affordable housing within existing single-family neighborhoods. Beginning in 2002, the state legislature passed a number of bills aimed at making it easier to develop ADUs. Most recently, the Rancho Santa Margarita zoning code was updated in 2023 to apply what was then current state law. Since then, the California Legislature has passed additional legislation and also additionally, the California Department of Housing and Community Development, or HCD, has reviewed the 2023 ordinance and made some interpretations that was inconsistent with state law in a couple of instances. So this ordinance covers types of ADUs, which are attached, detached, converted, and junior ADUs. There is a subset that we'll talk about in a moment called state exempt ADUs and JADUs. This ordinance will cover development standards, which include but aren't limited to setbacks, height, size, and parking. Those are applied when allowed by state law, and that's important because without an ordinance like this, we are following exactly state law. But in instances where state law gives local jurisdictions the ability to apply their development standards, that's what we've done in this ordinance. The same thing with owner-occupied and short-term rentals. At one point, we had indicated in our ordinance that short-term rentals, that JADUs and ADUs could not be used for short-term rentals. The state law has changed on that, and we are having to change our ordinance as well. And then there are time limits for city reviews set in state law that we are putting into this ordinance. The updates, you have a very detailed description of those in your staff report, as well as a red line in the attachment that shows the very technical nature of these changes. Basically, the government code changed the numbering of the ADU section, so we had to go through and fix all those references. We are dealing with state exempt ADUs and JADUs. That is a subset of ADUs where the city, if the ADU proposed meets certain standards, we can only require four-foot side and rear setbacks. So that is, that is the crux of a state-exempt ADU. Updates to the number of ADUs allowed per lot. Parking requirements are always changing in the newest state legislation. And then state law now does require that we allow for short-term rental of junior ADUs. Again, as I mentioned, there is a red line of the ordinance in your staff report. The Planning Commission reviewed the proposed ordinance on July 2nd and August 6th. So the item was scheduled for a public hearing on July 2nd, and on that day, we received a letter from an organization called CalHDF. They are an advocacy group. So at that time, we asked the Planning Commission to continue that public hearing to the August 6th meeting to give us time to both evaluate what CalHDF was asking and possibly meet with them. We were able to meet with them on July 8th. And the main idea of their comments, our main takeaway was that they wanted the city's ordinance to specifically recognize the existence and how state-exempt ADUs work. So you will see that in the ordinance, as it's written now, there is a sentence, I mean, I'm sorry, a section that defines state-exempt ADUs and then applies it later in the code. So at the conclusion of that public hearing, the Planning Commission did pass a resolution recommending approval of the ordinance by the city council. So our recommendation tonight is to introduce for first reading, read by title only, and waive further reading of the ordinance that's in your packet. I'm happy to answer any questions that you have. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Do we have any questions for staff? Councilmember Barrett.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do have one question. I believe that you made the changes that CalHDF was looking to, and so they've reviewed what changes we, and they don't have any additional concerns. That's correct. We received an email from them before the Planning Commission meeting. I apologize for not including it in your packet, but yes, they were satisfied with the changes that we made. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. My left, any questions for staff? No. Just a point of clarification. As you know, Rancho Santa Margarita is an award-winning master plan community. We have our existing municipal code and regulations that we've tried to maintain, to protect that award-winning master plan. But as I understand it, the changes before us tonight are mandated now by the state without regard to our existing rules. Is that correct? We're basically forced by the state to make these changes?
To help people.
Yes, the city must follow the state ADU law. By putting an ordinance together like this, we are able to maintain as much local control as the state allows in that regard.
And that's regardless of what the parking conditions might be on the street where that ADU was constructed?
Correct.
Or traffic? And did I understand that now an ADU could be built just, the setback is as close as four feet to the neighbor's property? Is that correct?
If it meets the criteria for a state-exempt ADU, it's four-foot side and rear setbacks.
Okay. All right then. Seeing that there's no more questions for staff, I'm going to open the public hearing. And this is the time where we would receive public testimony. First off, I would note for my council colleagues, we have received two e-commerce opposed to the proposed ordinance changes. One from Rhonda Lundberg and one from Bethard. And I call your attention to those, and we thank them for their comments. We have one individual who was asked to speak in person, and I'm going to call him forward at this point. I think I have your name right. Russ Kiore. And Russ, if I mispronounce your name, please let me know. Welcome.
It's Russ Corey, Mayor.
Corey.
Corey. Mayor Bill, members of the city council, my name is Russ Corey. I live in Dove Canyon, and I'm a member of CAR and the RSM Voice Group. I'm speaking this evening against item 6.1. I know your hands are tied, having to abide by rules of HCD and the bureaucrats in Sacramento who never seem to give sufficient thought to what they're doing, but this ruling on ADUs and JADUs is ridiculous, especially when it comes to homeowner associations. Dove Canyon, Rancho Sela, Walden, Robinson Ranch, Tribuco Highlands, and several areas of RSM are now listed as very high-fire hazard severity zones. Is it really in the best interest and safety of these residents to allow additional units with additional cars to be added to the one-way-in-and-one-way-out evacuation routes in these communities? Does it make sense to add more fuel to another airport-type fire? We just had another fire due to a lightning strike. These are my concerns as they relate to HOAs. Zoning, one accessory and one junior accessory unit are allowed for a single-family home. Parking requirements may not be required, so where do they park? How do they, how do you, now HOAs have to change their CC and hours of bylaws regarding parking? You're allowed to convert a garage into an ADU or JDU. Again, where does one park? You just took away one or two parking spaces from their garage, and several neighborhoods do not even have long enough driveways to park their car on. How does the fire department drive down a narrow street with cars parking on both sides of the road? Development standards, they're basically exempt from any development standards, so there's no control of how the structure looks architecturally? Side and rear yard setbacks, as you mentioned, reduced to four feet. With an ADU attached to the house, how are firemen going to run through a four-foot-wide area dragging hoses and equipment to get to the rear of a home to put the fire out? What happened to Zone Zero around the house? Utilities, do you just dig up HOA streets and to bring in all the utilities? What quality control do you have for integrity of the streets? Does the Tribuco Canyon Water District have sufficient water and sewer capacity to handle this? Does SCE and the gas company have enough sufficient power and gas to provide these additional units? In your conversations with HTC, was any of this discussed? I wish just once that our elected officials in Sacramento would visit this area to understand the unique situation RSM is in, and maybe they would rethink what they are doing, as we certainly don't need another Paradise Pacific Palisades or Eden disaster. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Russ. Appreciate your comments. I don't have any other speaker request cards when anyone else cares to speak. All right, then, seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing, turn this matter over to the city council for discussion and deliberation. If anybody cared to kick it off. Councilmember Holloway.
Thank you. I think it's been said that we're very limited on, if anything, that we could do to fight this situation. And I agree with a lot of what I've heard, a lot of speaker. It made a lot of sense, but there's not really much that we could do. I mean, I asked a question, because there's something in there about alternatives, meaning we could, like you said in recommendation, you know, recommend it, but, excuse me for just a second, let me find this. If we had some changes we wanted to make, a pretty exact wording, what could those be?
They're very limited, and it would, it would, it would be something probably very specific or very technical. We don't have any recommendations. We think we've put forward... We don't have any recommendations. We think we've put forward the best option for the city at this point.
And, and reading this, it was my, my opinion that any changes we might recommend would be minor. And that's maybe an excessive word for that, it wouldn't make any difference to speak of. For the people that are concerned about this, I don't know that it would make any difference at all. That's my opinion. Uh, unfortunately, we're gonna have to vote yes on this. Um, I don't think we have a choice.
Thank you. Councilmember Holloway, near pro temp.
Just, just to make that clear, it, it would be fair to say that any changes we make could not be substantive.
We think, we, we've put forward the, the best options that we, we think we have. So we've taken the opportunities, limited as they are, given by state law to apply our development standards, for example, and put those where they, they can be. Um, if, if there's not an ordinance in place, that means every time anyone calls about or brings in a accessory dwelling in it, our code, our, our staff has to go to the government code and interpret that. Uh, so we do recommend having an ordinance, and we think this is the, the best that we can do.
Well, despite the fact that I agree with virtually everything Mr. Corey had to say, I don't think we can do much. I mean, the state of California is mandating this through the brainchild of the Department of Housing and Community Development. And I don't think we can do much with it, so we can't make any substantive changes to it. And recognizing the fact that they continue to eat away at our ability to zone our own city, I don't see any option to vote to approve. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, a man?
Yes, Mr. City Attorney?
Yeah, so about three or four years ago, the state did give cities more discretion in about five or six different areas, giving cities options to encourage them to adopt these ordinances at the local level. We did make certain changes, technical changes, that were advantageous to Rancho Santa Margarita, but each year thereafter, the state has continued to reduce the ability of the city to have discretion. And now, uh, we've seen mostly erosion of local control and usurpation of the zoning code on this particular issue. Um, it is so dire at this point that if you were to make any further substantive changes, it would be viewed as State HCD as being inconsistent. And the governor has given HCD an additional enforcement authority. They now are the agency responsible enforcing this. And the biggest hammer they have is if you do go inconsistent with state law, they will revoke your um certification of your housing element. And then I won't want to get into all the bad things that will happen from that point forward, so. This is a program that the city has, council has agreed to in its housing element in this last arena cycle. It is required to be approved in order to keep your certification under State HCD laws.
Thank you. Councilmember Barrett?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I understand that we are obligated to bring our zoning code into compliance of state law. However, to me, it's frustrating that Sacramento continues to strip away our local control on issues that directly impact our residents. I want to be clear, I am not against ADUs. They can be an important tool in addressing housing affordability. But what I want is a balance. I want the ability for cities like Rancho Santa Margarita, a planned community, to also be able to consider environmental and public safety issues such as fire risk, evacuation routes, and parking availability. Unfortunately, these state laws specifically prohibit us from addressing parking impacts in our review. And that means more cars are parked on already crowded neighborhood streets, which limits access and visibility for emergency and rescue vehicles. As council members, we were elected by our community to listen to and address local concerns. Yet on this issue, our hands are tied. The result is that decisions with real consequences for the character, safety, and livability of RSM are being made in Sacramento rather than here. I remain committed to advocating for the voices of our residents to be heard in the policy discussions addressing both housing affordable issues and assuring that we do everything within the limits of our law to protect the safety and quality of life in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Imagine if you've got fifteen homes on one of our residential streets, and ten of them decide they're gonna build an ADU in their front yard. A lot of our neighborhoods are already challenged from a parking standpoint, traffic standpoint. Setbacks would be on top of each other. Even if the city had significant and real concerns relative to safety, we have no ability to object to that, correct? Can we just say you can't build them? In a cert, do we have any ability as the city of RSM to say no?
No, if, if the front, if the proposed front yard ADU meets specific criteria mandated by state law, you have no ability to say no. State HCD will commence an enforcement action against you if you do not change and correct the wrongdoing. They will revoke your housing element certification.
Right. And so, I hate this. I would simply say to those that are, might be listening, elections matter. The Democrats have a supermajority in Sacramento, and they are forcing this upon our planned community. And they're imposing a one-size-fits-all uh that, as was mentioned, chips away at our local control to protect our planned community. And they're chipping away at what makes Rancho Santa Margarita such a great place to live and raise a family. But nonetheless, it's a state mandate, and that's the way the law is. So are there any other councilmember comments? If not, then, um, we're going to introduce for a first reading uh to read by title only and waive further reading of an ordinance. Do I need to read the whole thing? Uh, of the ordinance described in item 6.1? And I'll move the item. Is there a second? Motion and a second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Thanks to all who took the time to write to us and speak to us on this important matter. Bringing us to item 6.2, a zoning code text amendment, ZCA 25-002, addressing regulations for thrift stores and adding child daycare centers as a conditionally permitted use in the public and quasi-public zoning district. Ms. Kuta, once again, you.
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor. Uh, staff is continually evaluating the zoning code for its usability, internal consistency, and obviously for compliance with state law. Uh, this proposed zoning code text amendment is a targeted update that addresses two somewhat unrelated issues. So first, uh, we will deal with unintended barriers to daycare uses in the public quasi-public zone, and then compliance with new state law with respect to thrift stores. So just by way of background, the zoning code has what we call the use table. So in each zoning district, there's a table that looks like this. This one is, uh, the example here is uses in commercial districts. It lists the conditionally permitted accessory and by right uses. Each table has a footnote which reads, unless a use is specifically identified, it is not permitted in the district. So if it's not in this table, it is not a permitted use. Child daycare center is a defined term in the zoning code. That definition is shown here. It's allowed with a conditional use permit, or CUP, in the residential, commercial, and mixed-use zones. The public quasi-public zoning district, or PQ, is a zoning district that's intended for public-serving uses. The uses in that zone include schools, churches, public utilities, structures, and, and City Hall is also in that zone. It allows, it allows schools, and it allows adult daycare, but child daycare center is not a listed use. There are several daycare centers currently operating in this zone, which were in place before the current zoning was adopted in 2007. That leads us to believe that this was an unintended omission of a permitted use that should have been in that zone and that belongs in that zone. So this is a pretty easy fix. We, uh, the, the table that I showed you before, we will uh add child daycare centers as a conditionally permitted use in the public quasi-public zoning district. That's really the extent of the change that needs to happen in the zoning code. This graphic here is just to show you, the blue properties are our public quasi-public zones, and uh there are three current daycare centers in that zone. Moving on to thrift stores, uh, the municipal code currently has a definition for second-hand store. That definition is shown here. It is not listed as a permitted use in any zoning district, therefore it's a prohibited use citywide. Last year, the legislature passed AB 2632, which prohibits cities from classifying or otherwise treating thrift retail establishments differently from non-thrift retail establishments, subject to certain limitations. So those limitations allow for cities to adopt operational standards to address the collection and receipt of donated items. Uh, this law went into effect earlier this year. So our proposal in the ordinance before you is to replace the definition of second-hand store with the state's definition of a thrift store, and then to allow thrift stores in the commercial general and commercial neighborhood zones subject to operational standards. Those operational standards are listed here. Uh, you'll see that they all do deal with basically the operation of um accepting donated goods, um signage, and the circulation that goes along with those activities. And at the bottom here, you'll see where we have included that as a permitted use, or P, in the two commercial zoning districts in the, in the proper use table. So at this point, our uh recommendation tonight is to introduce for first reading, read by title only, uh, the ordinance that is before you. I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you for that presentation. Council colleagues, questions for staff?
Actually, I, if I may, Your Honor, Mr. Mayor, I want to ask a question of our City Attorney. I didn't know until I saw the PowerPoint presentation that one of the daycare centers that you shared here is in my, at my church, Tribuco Presbyterian Church. My wife and I are members at that church. I'm wondering if it's advisable to recuse myself on this issue. It's not on the, it's not on the agenda. I just saw it on the PowerPoint.
Yeah, I, I believe this is, excuse me. This is a zoning code of general application throughout the entire zone, so I would think that it would be permissible for you to participate.
No, no, I just want to make sure we're clear on the record then.
Thank you for double-checking. Any questions for staff? Councilmember Holloway?
Mayor, thank you. Um, just a couple of questions on page two here, probably more than one. Under thrift, under thrift stores issue, referencing um both commercial neighborhood and commercial general zoning districts. For those that might not know exactly what that is, could you give an example of some, those areas in the city now that people could?
Sure. Commercial general tend to be your larger uh commercial centers. The target, the Center Across Street Target, which is the town center, uh, the Lowe's Center, which is called Santa Margarita Marketplace, um, Mercado de Lago by the lake, those are all uh general commercial neighborhood. Your smaller commercial centers, an example would be Dove Canyon Plaza, uh, Tribuco Marketplace, which is at the end of, uh, which is at Plano-Tribuco and Santa Margarita Parkway. Those are a few examples. Does that help?
Is this one of the scenarios where we have no choice?
Because we allow retail uses in both of the commercial zoning districts, uh, we can ask legal counsel, but yes, we, if, if we allow a retail use, we cannot treat a thrift retail use differently. Um, so, and that's why we're proposing it in both sectors.
On page two, they have bullet points, and it talks about operational standards, all the way from hours of operation to um the process to deliver, um, and all those that show up there. I want to ask you about the um enforcement of those items. Um, is that typical of a scenario where there's might be a, a violation of an ordinance, and it's called into the city, and then we, we um act upon that? Or are the thrift shop operators responsible to make sure this is, is operationally correct?
Really both. The, um, all thrift stores will be subject to these operational standards. They don't need to come in for a special permit. They are permitted use subject to these standards. So if we uh are alerted or determined that um a thrift store is in town, we don't have any right now, and is violating any of these standards, that would go through our normal code enforcement process.
Okay, and one of the, the second bullet point talks about hours of operation. Is the 7:00 AM hours, is that consistent with other timeframes where deliveries can occur? The 7:00 to 10:00, 7:00 AM, 10:00 PM?
This actually is the 10:00 PM to 7:00 AM. The donations may only be accepted?
Well, I might kind of reverse it, so we could, so it's, they can deliver at 7:00 AM. They can operate from 10:00 PM to 7:00 AM, but they can start deliveries at 7:00 AM.
The noise, yes, the noise ordinance, um, is, those are the options.
And the noise ordinance is 7:00 AM everywhere? Or is there a variation of, do we have some authority to talk about that number, or is it 7:00 AM? Something that the state requires?
The 7:00 AM is in a different section of the code, which regulates noise.
Right. So typically, in, in the city now, is 7:00 AM the standard hour, so people can bring and deliver at 7:00 AM anywhere in the city? Or the city, the words designated?
To some degree. There are, there are exempt noise. There are exempt noise, construction noise can start at 7:00 AM, because it's an exempt noise between 7:00 AM and a different hour at the end.
Are there any scenarios in the city where we're required to be later than 7:00 AM?
When we uh have approved conditional use permits for certain uses. So you know, conditionally permitted use is a use where we can, uh, where the Planning Commission can look at a conditional use permit, which places conditions which are intended to uh prevent any secondary impact. Noise is sometimes one of those secondary impacts. And so, yes, we have, in a conditional use permit situation, allowed for our required different hours of operation.
There was a situation a few years ago, I, I believe, a thrift shop, I don't know if they call themselves a thrift shop, that wanted to come into the city, and we denied that. Am I correct?
We didn't, there was no denial involved. We, uh, we simply um let them know that they were not a permitted use in the zone where they were attempting to establish.
Would they, would they be a permitted use now?
Correct. Yes, they would.
So at the time, we were correct by saying you're not a permitted use, or we?
Yes, at the time, I guess, and the state law is very recent, did not apply at that time.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. As I mentioned in our last agenda item, RSM is an award-winning master plan community. We've got rules on the books that embody that master plan. Brings a special quality of life that our residents enjoy. And do we, is it possible under the current state law for us to continue to keep thrift stores or second-hand stores as not permitted, is a prohibited use? Can we, in, in our city, can we do that?
That is no longer, uh, that is no longer the case. We can allow you.
So once again, the state's telling us how we have to run our city, chipping away at our local control, imposing a one-size-fits-all regulatory regime on our city and every other city throughout the whole state. Okay. I'll just state once again, the elections matter. Any other questions for staff? If not, I'm gonna open the public hearing. I don't believe I have any speaker requests, do I, the city clerk? Seeing none, I'm gonna close the public hearing, turn this matter over to the City Council for discussion and deliberation. Anybody care to begin? All right, so we have a motion to approve the staff recommendation to introduce for first reading, read by title only, and waive further reading of an ordinance. Um, is there a second?
I'll say it with purpose of, for purpose of discussion.
Yeah. Councilmember Barrett, please go ahead. We have a motion and a second, but we'll continue discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I wanted to thank staff for bringing this um forward, the important correction to our zoning code. The discovery of unintended barriers to the establishment of new child daycare centers in the public quasi-public zone highlights why it's so important that we continually review and update our code. Child care is a critical need in our community. And by allowing child daycare centers as a conditionally permitted use, we are giving schools, churches, and other public-serving organizations the ability to provide this essential service, subject to careful review by our Planning Commission to ensure compatibility with the surrounding neighborhood. This change not only helps our local organizations who want to provide childcare, but it also supports our families, working parents, and ultimately, the overall well-being of RSM. I appreciate staff work on this, and I believe that this is a positive step forward for our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? If not, I'm gonna call for the vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Bringing us to item seven, new business, 7.1. Ordinances amending Title 10, Buildings in Construction of the Rancho Santa Margarita Municipal Code, by adopting the California Building Standards Municipal Code by adopting the California Building Standards Code 2025 Edition, California Code of Regulations Title Twenty-four, including the California Building Code, Residential Code, Green Building Standards Code, Electrical Code, Plumbing Code, Mechanical Code, Administrative Code, Energy Code, Wildland Urban Interface Code, Fire Code, Historical Building Code, Existing Building Code, and Referenced Standards Code. Together with certain amendments, additions, and deletions, and adopting the 2024 International Swimpool and Spa Code, and the 2024 Property Maintenance Code. Hello again, Ms. Kuda?
Thank you again, Mayor Beal. Last one tonight, I promise. Um, so state law requires that the California Building Standards Commission adopt and publish California Building Standards Codes every three years. We call this the triennial building code update. New codes are recently published for the current cycle and will automatically go into effect on January one, twenty twenty-six. It's important to note that there's not just one building code. What we refer to collectively as the building code actually consists of separate codes, which are all listed in the staff report and just listed by the mayor. The 2025 edition of the California Building Standards Code contains thirteen separate parts. The 2022 edition previously had twelve separate parts. The new edition this year is the California Wildland Urban Interface, or WUI Code. The WUI requirements were formerly in Chapter Seventy-eight of the California Building Code and have now been made a standalone part. While the building codes will automatically take effect in January, the city goes through the adoption process every cycle in order to enact modifications known as local amendments. State law permits jurisdictions to make local amendments, as long as the modifications are at least as stringent as the requirements adopted by state law. And to make local amendments, the city council must make findings that the modifications respond to local climatic, geological, or topographical conditions. The city has adopted a number of local amendments during each of the prior code adoptions, adoption cycles. Some amendments are administrative, such as designating the building and safety staff and the building official, designating an appeal authority. Others relate to local conditions, such as requirements for Class A roofs, or the review of six-foot-tall fences. Local amendments do not carry over from prior code cycles and must be re-adopted every time there are new building codes. So this cycle, we are proposing local amendments to four codes, the California Building Code, the California Residential Code, the California Wildland Urban Interface Code, and the California Fire Code. Details of these amendments are included in your staff report. Aside from some of the updated references and numbering based on the new WUI Code, the amendments are the same as were approved for the 2022 codes. The process for adopting the building codes is to approve ordinances which adopt all of the codes by reference into Title Ten of the municipal code. And consistent with our past code adoption cycles, we've separated those into two ordinances for your review. The first one is for buildings in construction, and the second one are the fire codes. The recommended fire code amendments are provided to staff by the Orange County Fire Authority. You'll see in your staff report the detailed color-coded table that OCFA provides, and it explains all of the proposed amendments to the fire codes. The attachment shows uh, the necessary renumbering, and then illustrates the vast majority of the amendments are existing, which means they were adopted in prior code cycles. So at this time, we recommend that the city council uh, conduct the first reading and of the proposed ordinances, and set a date for the second reading and a public hearing on October eighth. So unlike the two ordinances that were just reviewed, uh, the building codes, it has a different adoption cycle where we have a first reading, and then the public hearing is at the second reading. So we do have our building and safety staff, uh, we have Ted Halsey, our building official, we have John Bowden from Orange County Fire Authority, who's a fire safety engineer, we have Michael Dowd from our city attorney's office, and we have Derek Bingham, our single senior planner, who all put this together. So if you have any questions that I can't answer, we are uh, well-prepared. So with that, I'll take any questions.
Thank you for your presentation. Do we have any questions for staff? All right, seeing none, I'm going to move. The staff recommendation is listed under item seven point one of our agenda. Is there a second? Motion is second. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Brings us to seven point two, a resolution approving the second amended and restated city manager employment agreement, ratifying certain changes to salary and compensation of the city manager. Mr. Simonean, Mr. City Attorney.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the city council. Uh, once again, as a reminder, state law changed several years ago. Anytime the city council proposes a change of any sort to executive salary or compensation of, of any executive at a city, an oral report is required first before the council can take action. So I will start with that oral report. Once again, the council commenced the annual performance evaluation of the city manager during closed session on June twenty-fifth of this year, and the council completed that evaluation on August thirteenth. Following completion of the annual performance evaluation of the city manager during closed session on August thirteenth, the council then reconvened an open session, and by minute action unanimously voted to approve certain changes to the salary and compensation of the city manager. The city council then directed the city attorney's office to prepare the resolution that's before you this evening, and the contract amendment for future ratification and approval by the council, as is required by state law, and as is required by the current city manager employment contract. So in brief, in recognition of exceptional job performance, on August thirteenth, the council unanimously voted by minute action to approve and directed the following changes to the city manager's salary and compensation. First, effective July first, twenty twenty-five, the city manager's current annual-based salary shall be increased by five percent. Second, the city will make a one-time, non-recurring contribution to the city manager's existing four fifty-seven deferred compensation plan account in the amount of ten thousand dollars. And third, the city manager's current severance pay benefit in her contract shall be increased from the current nine months to twelve months. Adoption of the proposed resolution by the council this evening, approving the second amended and restated city manager employment agreement, will have the effect of ratifying and implementing the minute action taken by the city council at the conclusion of closed session on August thirteenth. In terms of the fiscal impact, the city manager's current annual-based salary will be increased by five percent from two ninety-three, four fifty-four, to three oh eight, one twenty-six, which is a fourteen thousand, six hundred and seventy-two dollar and seventy cent increase annually. And the obvious, the one-time, non-recurring contribution of ten thousand dollars will have a ten thousand dollar uh, impact uh, to the city. This concludes my report. I'm available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we have any questions for staff? Okay. Do we have any council member comments or discussion? Councilmember Barrett?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Over the past week, I've received emails and questions about the city manager's compensation, and I'd like to take a moment to address this important issue. I've spent many years working in human resources, and I know that executive compensation is always a sensitive subject. It's important, though, that we look at the broader landscape and the facts. The role of city manager across Orange County has changed significantly in the last five years. There are currently a handful of vacancies in Orange County cities, and the tenure of city managers has shortened considerably. When I reviewed comparable cities in South Orange County, Rancho Santa Margarita city manager compensation is below average. In fact, our city manager is the only one who does not receive a deferred compensation. Dr. Cervantes is the longest-tenured city manager in our area, and among the most educated and experienced. She is frequently asked to serve on regional boards and committees, and her depth of knowledge of RSM is unmatched. That institutional knowledge benefits our city every single day. She has fostered a positive, stable work culture, which is reflected in our remarkably low staff turnover. I also want to highlight a practical reality. If we were to recruit a new city manager, we would almost certainly have to offer a higher salary for someone with less experience and far less familiarity with our city. Supporting an adjustment to bringing her compensation more in line with her peers is to me both a matter of fairness and good governance. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Holloway?
Thank you. I agree with everything Carrie just said. The, the proof is, we see, those of us that live here and work here, low crime rate, uh, substantial general fund reserve, um, a pretty much very happy public base. Um, a lot of city managers are judged on the complaints they receive, rather than the compliments. And I cannot remember a time where I received any complaints about a city manager. I assume there's been one in my time here, but it doesn't pop up, and that's, that's not the standard of, uh, that we would necessarily use, but it's certainly something to look at. Just take a look at the city. It's working very well for a lot of reasons, and um, Dr. Cervantes is, um, leads all of us very well, her staff, we work together as a council. I think Mayor and I have been through a number of city managers, I'm trying to find four, a number of city managers. And uh, Jennifer certainly is the best one that, that we've had, and the best one that I've experienced. I've been in municipal government my entire life, so um, it's working very well here. Thank you for all that you do, um, and I'm glad you're staying. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
I'll just be brief. I'll uh, double down on what Councilmember Barrett and Councilmember Holloway had to say. For those who aren't um, that familiar with other city managers and how other cities are run, I'll just tell you, we simply have the best city manager in the world. We do. It's not even a close call. And um, this um, uh, city manager is, is just exemplary in every fashion, and, and I've said so to her before, and I'll say it publicly again, she is just simply the best. Uh, so um, I'm going to be uh, voting to approve this uh, with absolutely no hesitation in my mind. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I agree with all the comments. I'd like to just say congratulations on a job well done to our city manager. In government, uh, results really matter, and you should be very proud of the results of our city. You know, if something goes wrong, you're going to get a lot of the blame in the same way that we would. But things are really going right, and you have a lot to be proud of. For those that may not know, Rancho Santa Margarita, once again, is ranked by the FBI as the number one safest city in the state of California, number fifteen in the entire United States. We have a balanced budget. We have an entire year's budget in reserves, and we finished last year with a surplus. The citizens of Rancho Santa Margarita have expressed very, very strong citizen satisfaction with the quality of life in this city. You have very strong support from your staff. They all admire you and enjoy working with you, and you have strong unanimous support from your city council. So it's an honor and a privilege to work with you, and I want to just say thank you for all that you do. And uh, it would be my honor to move this item. Is there a second?
Second.
We have an honor, uh, uh, motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye. Or aye. That motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Tonight, we have no continued items, so that brings us to public comments. This is the final time to address the city council on any matter that's not listed on the agenda. Speakers are limited to three minutes per person. First up, I have three speaker requests. Breanne Boyle.
I wanted to begin this by first asking if um, since we're not having a video recording or just doing audio to make sure everybody uses their microphones and can speak directly into it, um, because there's some that don't do that. So um, I'm also just here to remind everyone in town how long these council members have been controlling our city and your money. To quote Mayor Beal from just a little bit earlier, for those listening, I'd like to say elections matter. They already had a hold on this city, and when they redistricted for voting purposes, they drew lines across the map that allowed them to remain in their seats. Not so democratic. Let's go through the tenure of this council once more to underscore how thoroughly power has been concentrated in a small closed circle. Tony Beal has been on the council since two thousand and four, but his influence began even earlier on the planning commission. He has served as mayor six times. Brad McGur has been on the council since two thousand and twelve, again with prior service on the planning commission, and he's been mayor twice. Anne Figueroa joined the council in two thousand and eighteen after three years on the planning commission, and she too has held the mayor's seat. Jerry Holloway, he's been on the council since two thousand and two and served as mayor four times. And Carrie Lynn Barrett, our newest member, is only here because the redistricted maps finally cracked open the door to this absurd fraternity. With this new map, I will remind you that the mayor is elected citywide and appoints all five planning commissioners, therefore cementing more power and retaining it within just a few people. I just wanted to come up here and ask for the council to require term limits for council members. Thanks.
Yes, yes.
Thank you for your comments. Good evening, welcome.
I wasn't actually planning on speaking tonight, but I felt compelled to after the way this council meeting was opened. Mayor Beal, you decried political violence in the shooting of Charlie Kirk today, which was a terrible event. It's the forty-seventh school shooting in twenty twenty-five. I have children who go to school, and this fact of our country terrifies me. But Charlie Kirk wasn't a politician. And as of now, the shooter has not been caught. We don't know what the motivation was. So you are the one who has chosen to make this a partisan political event.
Exactly.
You are the one who introduced that, and if you are saying that he was a great man and a patriot, someone who espoused extremely far-right wing, racist, misogynist, and anti-Jibby Tukku rhetoric repeatedly, those are the views he was called out for. And I believe strongly in his right to say those things, but we don't know why he was shot today, other than the fact that this country has a gun problem. It has a shooting problem. As you pointed out, there have already been two shootings on school campuses, including one today, that resulted in the death of one student, and two others are still in critical condition. You are the one who chose tonight to make that a political event, because we don't know why he was shot. We don't even know who shot him. Please refrain from adding to the political rhetoric in this country that ascribes political motivations when we don't know what caused that. And I will say also, as a parent, it actually horrifies me that you would choose to do that in front of all of the children who are present this evening.
Thank you.
They already go to school and have to look every day in the corner, and see, corner of their classroom listed as the hard corner where they are to hide if a shooter comes onto their campus. My children have spent their lifetime doing active shooter drills in their school, and it traumatizes our children. And then you chose to open this meeting in front of all those children by addressing that so graphic. I'm ashamed of you.
Shame.
And I'm disappointed in everyone else if they don't speak up against this. Thank you.
We didn't pray for those kids.
Next up? Is Chris McLaughlin? Good evening, Chris, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor. Wow, it's a, I have to fall off. I wanted to talk a little bit about our financing with the respect to the Nielsen-Merksimer billing. There's not a new invoice for August. Uh, I expect next meeting we may have one. I think we're over a hundred thousand dollars uh, in, uh, in order to not pay a thirty thousand dollar invoice. I did download the thirty-four-page briefing that the city attorney mentioned last week, or last meeting, and read through it, and then I got carried away and downloaded another eight-page uh, brief by Douglas Johnson, the CEO of National Demographic Corporation. That's the demographer the city hired to do our redistricting. And uh, he was trying to explain how the city's uh, defense of um, you know, the, the plaintiff, the petitioner, Michelle Jackson, she didn't hire a good enough demographer, and trying to explain the whole concept of racially polarized voting and how it wasn't proven. I, I kind of think um, Doug Johnson's obviously the expert. From my perspective, the whole thing about racially polarized voting, which is what I want to talk about, is kind of junk science. Like, you don't really know how anyone voted, so you can, you can try to extrapolate, you know, um, trends from who was registered and who voted, but you don't actually know how people vote. So it's, it's a, it's an imperfect science. I don't even know, I didn't understand what Doug was talking about. I don't even know, I didn't understand what Doug was talking about. As far as our lawsuit, what is curious to me is that two years ago, attorney Michelle Jackson first threatened to sue the city with a CVRA lawsuit. She said, you know, the city appears to be, you know, afflicted by racially polarized voting. And I remember all of the city council members and myself agreeing. And I think to this day that we don't have that in the city. I still don't think we do. I think we have other problems that are certainly politically polarized, but not so much along racial lines as far as voting. As far as the lawsuit, one of the main contentions is, is Michelle Jackson didn't hire someone that can prove it. Well, I don't think the city did either, because I don't think it exists. So what's funny is, the city decided to convert to districts anyway. So it's like, does it matter now? No, you already converted. And now you don't want to pay her because she didn't prove it exists. That, to me, is just really backwards. I think the time to fight that, if you want to litigate the CVRA, because the brief said that, well, you didn't think you would lose the lawsuit. It just cost a lot of money. Well, I think the court's gonna look at that and say, well, you should fight that out in court, not just not pay the invoice and not pay, you know, not follow the state law. So I'm thinking the city might lose this lawsuit, and it will cost more than the invoice they could have paid, which is the opposite logic on why to convert it to districts. So good luck with that. Thank you.
Chris, just harkening back to our meetings before we converted to districts. We've talked about that very issue about not converting if we don't believe it's really justified. And fighting it, and I believe there's been close to 20, if I'm correct, cities that have tried to fight the existing statute, all have lost, I believe, my recollection is, because things are not defined very well in the state statute. Mr. City Attorney, could you just very briefly address the point? Why a city that might not believe there's racially polarized voting make the pragmatic decision to switch to districts rather than fighting court?
Yeah, so Rancho Santa Margarita, like many cities, had opted to voluntarily switch to districts because it's just too expensive to defend itself. It could cost hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars. And by today's account, if any city in California, in my opinion, wishes to defend their at-large election system faced with a demand letter, they need to reserve $2 million to mount that defense. And even then, no city in the state of California has one. So at this stage, Rancho Santa Margarita voluntarily switched to districts. It is not a question of whether there is or is not racially polarized voting. To this day, there is absolutely no direct evidence that Rancho's historic at-large election system constitutes any racially polarized voting whatsoever. Neither attorney Michelle Jackson was able to prove that using a demographer who is a deli manager who makes sandwiches in Laguna Hills.
Those aren't real facts.
That's not a qualified demographer. They provided no evidence, no statistical evidence to support the allegation whatsoever. Michelle Jackson, basically, in the case, actually billed the city for reviewing a racially polarized voting analysis that she put in her legal bills. Her own deli manager, demographer testified during deposition that he never created a racially polarized voting analysis, no study whatsoever. So he acknowledged under oath in deposition that no such study was created. So I'm not sure how she could have reviewed that bill and charged for it and, and that study. So I could go on, but again, Rancho Santa Margarita did not switch to districts because there was or wasn't evidence of racially polarized voting. It didn't because it can't afford to defend itself under the current legal climate. Thank you.
I have no other speaker requests cards. So we're gonna turn to item 10, City Manager's Report. The city manager, anything tonight?
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. I wanted to address some concerns that were brought up previously regarding the Antonio Parkway Gateway Improvement Project and the use of plant material and mulch. Specifically, the city staff has done due diligence with the designer in establishing a proper plant material and landscape plan for the project that is fire-resistant. Properly applying mulch has been shown to increase water retention and lock-in moisture, decrease soil temperature, inhibit weeds, and decrease soil erosion. Mulch traditionally performs better than river rock or deeply-composed granite for weed abatement. This organic suppression of weeds is environmentally friendly, reducing chemical use and risks to water quality, which also provides useful nutrients to the soil. More importantly, the mulch utilized through the SB 1383 program has a low rate of spread and flame height, which has been demonstrated in a combustion characteristic study done by the University of Southern California, I'm sorry, the University of California. Furthermore, the Orange County Fire Authority Vegetation Management Maintenance Guidelines, are guidelines for vegetation management for property owners and sets parameters for areas within 100 feet of a structure. They do not apply and are not enforceable implanted in areas outside of 100 feet of a structure. The approved plant list and the undesirable plant species cited within the Orange County Fire Authority Guidelines are applicable to a 100-foot area adjacent to existing or newly-built structures. Staff has met with the city's Orange County Fire Authority's Fire Prevention Specialist Liaison on the site and has reviewed the plans for the proposed project on Antonio Parkway. The Orange County Fire Authority Liaison did not have any issues with the proposed mulch or plants, given the location of the Antonio Parkway project and the fact that the project footprint area does not have any structures within 100 feet. Staff, moreover, verified that the nearest structure from Teheras Creek, the Teheras Creek side is 580 feet, and it's 550 feet on the gateway side. Therefore, the vegetation management guidelines previously referred to do not apply in this area. Furthermore, the proposed plant species that we are proposing for the Antonio Parkway Gateway Improvement Project are not identified in the undesirable plant species list in those guidelines, even if they did apply. And these plant materials that are proposed when installed in limited irrigated and reduced areas do not present an elevated ignition potential. The total width of the planning area along the monument side is less than four feet, and this will be continually maintained by city contractors. Other than that, I have nothing to add other than I truly enjoy working for this community, for the city of Rancho Santa Margarita, and for the council. I feel I have a wonderful staff, and I appreciate all of the support that everyone has given me for the past 13 years. And I look forward to continuing to work with each and every one of you. Thank you.
Thank you. Bringing us now to item 11, Matters Presented by the Mayor and Councilmembers. Anything tonight? Councilmember Baird.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Today, I want to take a moment to acknowledge that September is National Suicide Prevention Awareness Month. And today, September 10th, is World Suicide Prevention Day. Suicide is the 11th leading cause of death in the United States. In 2024, the United States experienced a troubling resurgence in suicide rates, reaching levels unseen since 1941. The national age-adjusted suicide rate climbed to 14.7 per 100,000 people, an increase from 14.2 in 2022. This reflects a 30% rise over the past 20 years, with more than 49,000 lives lost in 2024 alone. This is not just a statistic, it is a profound public health crisis. Suicide is preventable, and those who are struggling are not alone. Every year, thousands of families are left navigating the tragedy of losing a loved one. Too often, feelings of shame and stigma prevent open conversation about suicide and mental health. But we must break that silence. This issue is deeply personal for me. My 14-year-old nephew, Aiden, died by suicide. My family and I will never get over this loss, and I still replay in my mind what I could have done differently. Aiden's death changed my family forever, and it drives me to do everything in my power to prevent another family from suffering the same heartbreak. Now more than ever, with rising mental health challenges, increasing feelings of isolation, we must reach out to our children, our friends, our neighbors, and remind them that they are not alone. Talking about mental health isn't easy. It requires vulnerability, but it's so important that we create a community of compassion, support, and connection. I want to remind everyone that 988 is the National Suicide and Crisis Lifeline. It is available 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 365 days a year, and can be reached by call or text in multiple languages. Trained counselors are always ready to help. As a community, let's commit to supporting one another, extending kindness and being there for those who need us most. And please know that I am always here to listen and to help. Thank you.
Thank you.
Want to follow up with what the city manager said regarding upcoming events. Tomorrow is our annual Patriot Day commemorating 9/11. I can't believe it's 24 years ago. I mean, it seems to me like yesterday. For those who are new to our city and may not be aware, we had a resident of our city, Lisa Frost, who graduated from St. John's Episcopal School and Tribuco Hills High School. She went on to Boston University, graduated Kornell, was flying home on the second flight, Flight 175, United 175, the second plane to strike the World Trade Center that day. Since then, we have a number of residents, Corporal Jordan Stanton and others, who passed in the service of their country in military operations that came after 9/11. So tomorrow, it's the best we can do is to have a commemoration honoring our first responders, honoring the military, honoring Lisa Frost and everyone who lost somebody. I think, frankly, I think, I know, I think every one of us knows somebody who knows somebody that they lost in 9/11 and thereafter. So it's an opportunity, not just for all of us, to get together and commemorate and honor those people. But if you have children, and Jack, when you mentioned your children, I think it's a great learning opportunity for children. It's a great, it's a great opportunity. They weren't born, you know, 24 years ago. Mine were. But it's an opportunity to bring the kids, celebrate, commemorate, I should say, those that we've lost in 9/11 and thereafter. And I would invite everyone to attend. I believe it's at 5:30 tomorrow in the Bell Tower. We're gonna do it inside this time. So again, it's not a long, it's not a long event. It probably lasts about an hour to an hour and a half at the most. So if you're freedom online, I would, I would again invite you to participate at that time. Thank you.
Thank you. So that brings us to adjournment for our meeting. The next regular meeting of the city council will be held Wednesday, September 24, 7:00 p.m. here in our council chambers. And as I mentioned in my opening remarks tonight, I'm gonna adjourn this meeting in honor of the memory of Charlie Kirk, a brave American patriot.
And all the kids who also died in school shootings that you forgot.